I call the order of a meeting of the boards of the members of Community Facilities, General District Number One, Community Facilities Utilities District Number One, Palm Valley, CFD Number Three, Estrella Mountain Ranch, CFD, Centerra, CFD, Cortina, excuse me, CFD, Cotton Flower, CFD, Wildflower Ranch, CFD One, and Wildflower Ranch, CFD Two, King Ranch, CFD. We have one member who won't be with us this evening. Do I need to get an absence approved by the council or the board?
CFD? Probably not a bad idea.
Okay. Can I get a move to excuse Councilmember Holm and second it? All those favor signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Close your ayes. Six zero. Ask for acceptance of the draft minutes of a joint meeting held on January 22, 2007. Any comments or questions on those? Okay, I think I'd best to get a motion to approve those.
We need to read the resolution, the other item on consent. They're both on the consent agenda. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, it's not the one I know.
Oh, it's not? Oh. Adopt Resolution 07-143, amending Resolution CFGD Number One, Resolution 0178, previously adopted on November 26, 2001, to correct typographical errors in modified assessment amounts pertaining to Community Facilities, General District Number One.
We aren't to a consent yet.
Oh, well, the minutes should have been just on consent. All the minutes. All right.
Well, they're in the... Okay, that's all right.
So, six minutes should have been on that.
All right, well, I'll move minutes to consent then, okay?
Okay.
So, we'll move to now ratifying expenditures, and there are none. Communications, citizens' comments from the floor. Would anyone like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing that, I'll move now to consent, and why don't you do that again?
Okay.
Ask clerk to read them, A and B.
Minutes of joint CFD meeting held on May 29, 2007, for the above ten CFD boards, which the mayor announced. Adopt Resolution 07-143, amending Resolution CFGD Number One, Resolution 01-78, previously adopted on November 26, 2001, to correct typographical error in modified assessment amounts pertaining to Community Facilities, General District Number One. Okay, I adopted.
Would anyone in public wish to remove an item? Would anyone on the board wish to remove an item? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, and that did include the minutes, correct?
I guess.
Okay. Have a roll call, both, please.
Vice Chairman Antoniak.
Aye.
Board Member Sousa.
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier.
Aye.
Board Member Lord.
Aye.
Board Member Osborne.
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Cast a seven zero.
Six zero.
Oh, six zero, oh, sorry.
Okay, we'll move to business. We'll now have a public hearing. To receive comments for or against any of the proposed expenditures in the final budget for ten, Community Facilities District, open the public hearing and ask for staff presentation. Sheila.
Good evening, Chairman Kavanaugh and board members. This agenda item is the public hearing, which is required for all the CFD final budgets, and it's for fiscal year 2007, 2008. You may receive comments from the public on each one. I have prepared a schedule that gives overall final budgets, which you'll see up there right now, and I handed one out to each one of you. It has a breakdown of the funds for operations and maintenance, debt service, and capital improvement projects, with an overall budget for each one, and it also shows your property tax rate for the O and M, and also for the debt service, and a combined rate for that, and what we had received as the preliminary assessed valuation for each CFD that we're looking at this evening. We also presented these budgets. Nothing has changed in the budgets since the tentative budget, which you approved a few weeks ago in the end of June. Now, I have a couple of housekeeping items in the co-act for the Community Facilities, General District. The operations and maintenance item was listed as $514,858. It should be $514,585. The budget was the same, it just was a typographical error in that, but the amount of the budget is $10,139,017. Also, for our Wildflower Ranch, Community Facilities, General District Number One, it also had the operation and maintenance amount incorrect at $40,994, and the correct amount is $41,994. The budget remains the same. It didn't change. We kept that the same, it's $1,371,426. Again, it was just a typographical error on that. The Community Facilities, General District Number One expenditure total is $10,139,017, with a property tax rate being reduced in fiscal year 2008. That's what we're proposing. The total combined tax rate is .804 per each $100 of secondary assessed valuation. The tax rate for this fiscal year, which ends June 30, 2007, was $1. The Community Facilities Utilities District Number One, the total budget is $36,63,067, with a proposed tax rate being the same as last fiscal year, or this fiscal year, of $1 per each $100 of secondary assessed valuation. The Palm Valley, CFD Number Three, budget is $36,982,174. The property tax rate is being reduced for the fiscal year 2008 to $1.6295 per each $100 of secondary assessed valuation. The current rate is $2. The Centerra, CFD, budget is $11,819,257, with the proposed property tax rate being the same for this fiscal year ending in 2008, and that rate is $3. The Cotton Flower budget is $1,449,103, with the property tax rate being reduced for fiscal year 2007, eight, for a combined rate of 1.7639 per $100 of secondary assessed valuation. The current rate is $3. Cortina, CFD, the budget is $2,64,596, with the property tax rate being the same for fiscal year 2007, 2008, and that rate is $2.85. The Estrella Mountain Ranch budget is $87,904,736. The property tax rate is being the same for $1.30 per each $100 of secondary assessed valuation. The King Ranch, CFD, total budget is $115,992,532, with the property tax rate being the same for fiscal year 2008, and that is 30 cents per $100 of secondary assessed valuation. The Wildflower Ranch, Community Facilities District, is $1,371,426. The property tax rate is being reduced in fiscal year 2008 for a combined rate of 1.3123. The current rate is 2.134. And the last Community Facilities District is Wildflower Ranch, Community Facilities, General District Number Two. The budget is $1,283,122, with a proposed property tax rate being reduced in 2007, 2008 for a combined rate of 1.1454, and the rate for this fiscal year is 2.3935. Now, the budgets may be a little large, and you see in some, but we propose in there, we have to put things in just like the city does. You propose, maybe you have more expenditures, maybe you'll sell additional bonds during the year. You have to put those amounts in there, so you'll see large amounts. It's kind of like a placeholder, just to have a budget. You may not do it, so you won't spend it, but you have to have that placeholder. At this time, I will entertain any questions.
Okay, we'll get back to Sheila. Now, I ask for comments from the public, and Lynn, I do this for each one independently. Individually, I guess. Okay. To the public, again, this is a public hearing. Are there any comments for the Community Facilities, General District Number One? For the Community Facilities Utilities District Number One? For Palm Valley, Community Facilities District Number Three? For Estrella Mountain Ranch, Community Facilities District? For Centerra, Community Facilities District? For Cortina, Community Facilities District? For Cotton Flower, Community Facilities District? For Wildflower Ranch, Community Facilities, General District Number One? And Wildflower Ranch, Community Facilities District Number Two? For King Ranch, Community Facilities District? Okay, seeing no comments from the public, I'll close the public hearing. And I ask the clerk to read a resolution for all ten CFDs by title only, please.
Adopt the resolutions approving the final budget for the Goodyear Community Facilities Districts for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2007, and ending June 30, 2008, for the following. Community Facilities, General District Number One, Resolution CFGD Number One, 06-142. Community Facilities, Utility District Number One, CFUD, 07-064. Palm Valley, Community Facilities District Number Three, PVCFD Number Three, Resolution 07-015. Centerra, Community Facilities District, Resolution 07-025. Cotton Flower, Community Facilities District, Resolution 07-029. Cortina, Community Facilities District, Resolution 07-024. Estrella Mountain Ranch, Community Facilities District Number One, Resolution 07-059. King Ranch, Community Facilities District, Resolution 07-006. Wildflower Ranch, Community Facilities, General District Number One, Resolution 07-036. Wildflower Ranch, Community Facilities, General District Number Two, Resolution 07-031.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, would anyone in council wish to remove an item or have any questions on any of these ten CFDs? Just two quick ones, Sheila. I assume the 30 cents on King Ranch is a placeholder. Is that right? There's...
Chairman Kavanaugh and board members? No, that is 30 cents for operations and maintenance. Even though they are not doing anything in it, we're still having to do journal entries. We're getting property tax, and we're maintaining the books on that as well. So, it's just 30 cents. It's a minimal amount, because they don't have very much assessed valuation, as you can see on the paperwork. I believe it's only $3,527,000 as secondary assessed valuation. So, you're not going to get a whole lot in that 30 cents, but it's actually for our time to do things in that.
What example of O and M right now, if you may?
Um, it's minimal. I mean, it actually, the assessed valuation came up, but I couldn't tell you the exact numbers for the other fiscal year, or for this current fiscal year. But we're looking at, even though we have $831,750, that is not for operations and maintenance. That is not what the property tax will bring in. Basically, we also have information in there if we do... That particular Community Facilities District was looking at pretty much doing special assessment bonds. There's a lot of work in doing special assessment bonds, so that's why we have a large amount in operations and maintenance. So, you have minimal amount for actually operations and maintenance with the 30 cents.
What's the actual collection, dollar amount wise, on three, I mean, 30 cents? I can do it in my head, but...
Yeah.
Calculator. You said $3 million, $3 million in assessed valuation?
$9,000.
$9,000 for the year.
I just, it's okay, I just don't know what they're going to do.
You still have to maintain the books.
Okay, that's a good answer right there. What about the Palm Valley, Community Facility District Number Three? My concern there is, I think it's $1.7 million for the regional mall, and it just seems like that's misplaced, that shouldn't be in CFD Number Three, Palm Valley Number Three. It's closer to Number One, and it's, may or may not be in Utilities District, but it's a good mile from the rest of Palm Valley, CFD Number Three. I'm not sure why those people are paying for that, though.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Ruby with Gus Rosenfeld. Mayor, we just, Larry and I have been talking about that particular stretch of highway, and for the other board members, we're talking about, I believe, North Bullard Avenue from I-10 to McDowell. See that blue stretch there?
Where? What are you looking?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, tell us what you're looking at while you're...
Looking at this map, is that, does that show up?
We're not back there to switch it. Picture of it's in this book. Palm Valley, General District Number Three.
I apologize.
All right, we got reams of paperwork back there, so...
You don't have copy of your paperwork, you have to go back.
See, here's the district. What's happening?
The reason we're a little off guard on this, Mayor, is because this is probably a topic we'll want to discuss in connection with the feasibility report for those bond financings, but let's take a peek at it now if we could.
Yeah, I was just concerned about a great approval for the budget, if I question it on the feasibility.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Mayor, we're talking, and for benefit of folks, we're talking about this stretch of highway right here.
Roadway, roadway, not highway.
Well, it's a nice, big road.
Big road.
Lower down.
Talking about I-10.
Yes, sir. The, that stretch of road was originally included in the Utilities District, and then moved over to the Palm Valley District, which is what you see in the green. The Utilities is what you see on this side. Larry and I were just talking about it, and trying to come to the conclusion of who does really benefit. The statute requires that any CFD can finance a particular piece of infrastructure if that CFD is principally or primarily benefited by the improvement. And so, when you get a case like this, where the road may benefit one or more, then how do you allocate that? Do you allocate it? You know, have you met the statutory requirement of principally or primarily benefiting? I would suspect, and I, that, you know, there is a strong argument that we can make, that it does benefit the folks in Palm Valley, but like the mayor points out, it probably also benefits those in the Utilities District. The proposal, I think, Mayor, that we would suggest is a couple of things. Number one, the budget for the Utilities District is broad enough in the sense that it includes the bond issue that we're considering tonight. Originally, I believe the Suncor folks had put that stretch of road in the Utilities District. Is that right? Yeah. And so, I don't think it's going to have a budget difference with respect to the Utility District, because the entire amount of bond issue is in that budget. So, what I would propose is allow us to get with Suncor, and make a determination as to what we think who benefits how much in that sense, and maybe we split the cost of that road in some way, shape, or form. Right, as a consequence, we need it in both feasibility reports that we'll look at later. It's currently only in Palm Valley Number One, or Number Three. So, I suggest that allow us to look at that. We'll bring back to you if we see that there is a reasonable allocation that can be made to the Utilities District. We'll bring back to you an amendment to the feasibility report that you'd consider tonight, and if you approve it, great, but we'll amend that so as to allow a portion of that road, if it's engineeringally appropriate, as benefit might be determined, to be financed by that Utilities Bond issue also. And I think that's probably a fairer and more accurate allocation.
Should it be shared among the three CFDs?
The third one being the General?
Yeah.
I believe the General is way to the east. Is that...
No, it's right there. It's just north of it. Yeah, just north of it. Yeah.
The reason we, that I balk at that is simply because the General's done doing bond deals, and so really doesn't have any money in that context. We have maxed out with respect to its infrastructure and tax rates in there, so I hesitate a little bit doing it that way. And again, Mayor, I, the statute require, the standard being, or Mr. Chairman, sorry, the standard being principally or primarily, and I think between the two of them, that particular stretch of roadway principally and primarily benefits those two districts. Now, others perhaps, but certainly principally and primarily those.
I agree. I think he's got a fine point, sharing between the two.
I mean, I look at it, and Utilities Number One seems to capture, I mean, while I understand, maybe to the far west, and some northwest areas, they wouldn't be using it. Bullard really straddles the middle of the two. I mean, not completely in the middle, but somewhat, you know, it's 40 percent. You know, 40 percent of the, well, anyway, any way you look at it, 60/40, but it seems to make sense to either split it between the two or put it in Utilities.
I would agree that there should be some allocation there. And I think we want an engineer to take a little closer look, and maybe try to figure out, you know, which way traffic is more likely to flow, and consequently do a fair allocation of that roadway.
Agreeing to do that, does that affect the motion?
Once again, Mayor, with respect to the budget items tonight, I think it's perfect in that what we have, because the 1750 is in the Palm Valley budget, and the other bond issue for the Utilities is in their budget. So, from a budget perspective, I think we're covered on both fronts and for an allocation. And as Sheila pointed out earlier, you know, that's, this is the max amount we probably, in almost all instances, don't expect to spend that much.
Okay, then you might give us some counsel on how we handle the motion when we get to the Palm Valley Communities, Community Facilities District Number Three today, on the feasibility.
Yes, but, yes, Mr. Chairman, that and the feasibility report for the Utilities District.
Okay. All right, any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the, I guess, the, well, the resolution as read by the City Clerk for all ten CFDs?
Come on.
Second. Motion from Board Member Sousa, a second from Vice Chair Antoniak. Any further discussion? Okay, could I have a roll call, both, please?
Board Member Sousa.
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier.
Aye.
Board Member Lord.
Aye.
Board Member Osborne.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Antoniak.
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Cast a six zero.
Okay, we'll now have a public hearing for Palm Valley Community Utilities District to receive comments for the feasibility report submitted in connection with the proposed issuance of not to exceed $25 million of GO bonds. Open a public hearing. Staff presentation.
Chairman Kavanaugh and Commissioners, board members. The first thing I want to explain to you, I guess several of you had questioned whether projects in the Community Facilities Utilities District Number One, and the Palm Valley Community Facilities District, were all residential where they were being taxed. They are not. We both have, both districts have commercial and residential properties in both of those districts. Now, for the Community Facilities Utilities District Number One feasibility report, by law, we are required to have the public hearing, and this, the feasibility report is for a proposed issuance of not to exceed $25 million in general obligation bonds. The Community Facilities Utilities District Number One consists of approximately 7,644 acres of land. Projects included in the feasibility report are mostly roadway projects, with the exception of the fire station located in the Pebble Creek Parkway, or Pebble Creek area, and the city park. They are listed in more detail in Section Two of the feasibility report, and they also have maps in Section Three for where these projects are going to be located. They may, the bond proceeds, if we approve this feasibility report, the bond proceeds would be used for only those projects, unless we would come back and amend the feasibility report. The projects listed in the feasibility report are $38,710,000, so that well exceeds the $25 million, what they're saying not to exceed. Also, for this particular deal, they have a standby contribution agreement, which the developer would be used, would be signing for sizing this particular bond up to the $25 million. We've done that in the past, and it meets all the requirements that we have for that particular standby contribution agreement. And Mr. Ruby would be available if you have any questions on that. Following this public hearing, you will also be asked to approve the resolution for this feasibility report. I will entertain any questions at this time for this item.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Ask clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Adopt CFUD Number One, Resolution 07-065, approving the feasibility report relating to the acquisition, construction, and financing of certain improvements benefiting the district, declaring its intention to acquire and/or construct certain improvements as described in the feasibility report relating to such improvements, determining that not to exceed $25 million general obligation bonds will be issued to finance the costs and expenses thereof under the provisions of Title 48, Chapter Four, Article Six, Arizona Revised Statutes, and all amendments thereto.
For this feasibility report, Scott, join you to include in the motion, the fact that we may be sharing the regional mall.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would suggest we do the following, which is adopt the resolution in the form submitted, but in connection with the, with that motion, make, make a kind of stipulation that directs staff to go and review the costs and benefit of the Bullard Road segment, and if appropriate, bring back an allocation or a revised feasibility study or report that would reflect the Utilities District picking up a portion of that cost.
Would there be any time limit on when they have to come back?
Mr. Chairman, Member Sousa, I would suggest that we have up until we spend the last $1,750,000 of this particular bond issue, so what will be, number one, we'll be very diligent about this and get it resolved, so that probably when you come back from your summer break, we're going to have that. We have some publication requirements and that sort of thing to meet, so we do have some extended time period, but I would suggest, and I don't see a problem in bringing that back as soon as you reconvene in late August.
Okay.
And I'll personally make sure we don't spend all the bond money in the Utilities District without having looked at that issue.
Okay, then I'm going to ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, and once he completes it, would you add your comments?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody agree with that? One motion, please. Okay, Lynn, would you read the resolution by title only, please?
Adopt CFUD Number One, Resolution 07-065, approving the feasibility report relating to the acquisition, construction, and financing of certain improvements benefiting the district, declaring its intention to acquire and/or construct certain improvements as described in the feasibility report relating to such improvements, determining that not to exceed $25 million in general obligation bonds will be issued to finance the costs and expenses thereof under the provisions of Title 48, Chapter Four, Article Six, Arizona Revised Statutes, and all amendments thereto.
And that motion is supplemented by?
That it's approved on the condition that staff review the allocation of costs and benefits of the Bullard Road, or Bullard Avenue section between I-10 and McDowell Road, and if appropriate, bring back an amended feasibility report to reflect an allocation of the cost to the Utilities District.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion from Board Member Cavalier, and a second from Board Member Lord. Discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Board Member Cavalier.
Aye.
Board Member Lord.
Aye.
Board Member Osborne.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Antoniak.
Aye.
Board Member Sousa.
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Cast a six zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to consider adoption of a resolution to approve the sale of GO bonds for the Community Facilities Utility District. Ask the clerk to read a resolution by title only, please.
Adopt CFUD Number One, Resolution 07-066, authorizing the issuance of its district general obligation bonds, Series 2007, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust and security agreement, a purchase contract relating to the bonds, a standby contribution agreement, and certain other documents securing the payment of the bonds, awarding the bonds to the purchaser thereof, ratifying and approving a preliminary official statement relating to the bonds, approving a final official statement relating to the bonds, and levying an ad valorem tax on taxable property in the district.
I don't need any comments on that. Okay, could I have a motion, please, to approve the resolution to approve sale of GO bonds for the Community Facilities Utility District?
Move we adopt the resolution as read by the clerk.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Antoniak, and a second from Board Member Lord. Discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Board Member Lord.
Aye.
Board Member Osborne.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Antoniak.
Aye.
Board Member Sousa.
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier.
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to have a public hearing, open a public hearing for Palm Valley Community Facilities District.
Chairman Kavanaugh and Board members, this is another one that is, it's required by public law to have a public hearing for any comments on the proposed feasibility report, and the bond issuances for general obligation bonds not to exceed $5 million. The Palm Valley Community Facilities District Three consists of approximately 3,110 acres of land. In addition, it overlays a section of the Community Facilities Utilities District Number One, as was shown on the map that we was here on earlier. Most of the projects in this here are, again, are, all the projects are street projects. In Exhibit A, the resolution lists all the projects for this feasibility report. Again, on Section Two, it lists in more detail each of the projects, and in Section Three of your feasibility report, it has maps showing where these projects are going to be located. The feasibility report proceeds would only be going towards those projects, again, in this particular feasibility report if it's approved. The costs associated with the projects in the feasibility report are estimated to be $11,480,000. However, the feasibility report is asking for a not to exceed amounts of $5 million. I will entertain any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public on the Palm Valley Community Facilities District feasibility report? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Adopt PVCFD Number Three, Resolution 07-016, approving the feasibility report relating to the acquisition, construction, and financing of certain improvements benefiting the district, declaring its intention to acquire and/or construct certain improvements as described in the feasibility report relating to such improvements, determining that not to exceed $5 million in general obligation bonds will be issued to finance the costs and expenses thereof under the provisions of Title 48, Chapter Four, Article Six, Arizona Revised Statutes, and all amendments thereto.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution read by the City Clerk, plus adding the comments that were read by Mr. Ruby for the Palm Valley Community Utilities District. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, in this case, we don't need necessarily that contingency language about bringing back an amended feasibility report because it's already in the study. Just be aware that if we bring back an amended report for the Utilities District that shows a portion can be allocated by the Utilities District, then obviously we will not expend the total $1,750,000, which is shown in this Palm Valley feasibility report. It will be reduced by whatever share is picked up by the Utilities District. So I think we have, just in the event for some reason the engineers come back and say, "By George, every car utilizing that roadway is Palm Valley," and nothing from the Utilities District. We've got our bases covered there, but we don't expect that to be the result.
Okay, then I'll correct my comment and say that I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read by the City Clerk only, please. Do you approve the adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Motion from Board Member Sousa, a second from Vice Chair Antoniak. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Lord?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to resolution to approve sale of GO bonds for this Palm Valley Community Facilities District. Ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Adopt PVCFD Number Three, Resolution 07-017, authorizing the issuance of its district general obligation bond, Series 2007, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust and security agreement, a purchase contract relating to the bonds, and certain other documents securing the payment of the bonds, awarding the bonds to the purchaser thereof, ratifying and approving a preliminary limited offering memorandum relating to the bonds, approving a final limited offering memorandum relating to the bonds, and levying an ad valorem tax on taxable property in the district.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by the City Clerk?
So move.
Second.
Motion, Board Member Lord's, and a second from Vice Chair Antoniak. Open for discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Chairman Antoniak?
Aye.
Board Member Sousa?
Aye.
Board Member Cavalier?
Aye.
Board Member Lord?
Aye.
Board Member Osborne?
Aye.
Chairman Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the last item on our CFD meeting agenda. Australia Mountain Ranch CFD, conduct a public hearing. This board will conduct a public hearing for the feasibility report submitted in connection with the proposed issuance of a special assessment revenue bond, Series 2007. Open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Kavanaugh and Board. For this discussion, we've had a number of work sessions and discussions on this very issue tonight. It's a very complicated issue. So the proposed format is that we're going to ask Sheila Mills to present the feasibility report to you. I will follow that up with some answers to some questions I have received over the past couple of weeks from members of this board. After my comments, we'll ask Greg Bielli from Newland Communities to present some comments on behalf of the developer within that area, and then I'll come back to see if you have any further questions and are ready to proceed. So with that, I'd like to ask Sheila to start by presenting the feasibility report.
Chairman Kavanaugh and Board members, again, this item is a requirement by law to have a public hearing on the feasibility report, and this is for the Australia Mountain Ranch. Its proposed issuance of not to exceed $7,500,000 in special assessment funds. The assessment area would be called the Gulf Village Special Assessment District Number Two. The Australia Mountain Ranch overall district consists of 9,771 acres of land. This would be the second Gulf Village assessment bond, assessment area, in the Australia Mountain Ranch. However, it would represent the fourth special assessment bond or lien that we are looking for in this particular district. We had two others that have actually issued bonds, is in the Gulf Village area, and one is in the Desert Village area, and you have approved the assessment bond issuance for the Montecito area. So that's the third, and this would be the fourth. The projects here are listed, are street projects for that particular area. The resolution has an Exhibit D, which shows the listing of all the projects. If they're approved in this feasibility report, the costs, total costs associated with the public infrastructure is $11,857,333. This feasibility report asks for a not to exceed $7,500,000. The methodology for this particular assessment area has been worked on by our district engineer, Will Dan, David Gu, who is here this evening if you have any questions. The, pretty much, he has it, pretty much completed, and the assessment, he is allocating it across all the areas, so it's doing it as an approximate amount of $15,244 per lot. So they're not doing it as a separate amount, as is shown in the feasibility report on the last page. They had various assessment amounts, but they're allocating it evenly across all the assessments based upon the number of lots they are proposing out there. That is all I have for this, and I will entertain any questions.
Mr. Laine?
Okay, I think because of the nature of the questions, I'll go ahead and answer some of the questions that have been asked of me at this point. The first question is, what is the relationship between the CFDs and development impact fees? How do those two interact? The feasibility reports that both the two that you've received already this evening and approved, as well as this feasibility report, are primarily for infrastructure that is financed, that is not included within the development impact fees. And none of the Australia Mountain Ranch improvements are, would be included in the development impact fees because they are more of a development-related cost, representing the roadways and so forth. There's actually only one in one of the Palm Valley, in the Utility District one, which was for the fire station, where there are development impact fees, and those fees, there are credits offset by development agreements to compensate for that being received because you cannot charge twice for the same thing. Generally, a CFD will pay for costs of primary benefit, as Scott described, within the boundaries of that Community Facilities District, whereas a development impact fee will pay for costs that are broader and affect other parties other than just one developer, and may be The second question I was asked was to bring, or to show the council various rate schedules from similar to previous presentations, but to expand on them just a little bit. The first schedule that I have, and I have passed out a packet of all four of these schedules to, in front of each of the desks as we came in this evening. This schedule is a schedule of the city and town-only property tax rates in Maricopa County, and that's based on the 2006 property tax year, as those are the only tax rates that have been, are the most recent tax rates that have been established. City of Goodyear's combined tax rate, this is city only, is approximately $1.60. The highest on this list is $2.97, and the lowest, of course, is several communities that do not have a property tax in Maricopa County. I showed you this schedule, I believe, two weeks ago, but I had it sorted a little differently. I sorted this one in order of the combined property tax rate. The second schedule I'd like to show you is a listing of all of the Community Facilities Districts that were on the property tax rolls in Maricopa County for 2006. Shows the community that they're in, in the, in the second column. The third column shows the assessed value for 2006. The next column shows the actual tax levy for that district for the 2006 property tax year, and that property tax year coincides to the fiscal year that ends June 30th of 2007. The tax rate is shown on the next column for each of these districts, and then yes or no as to whether or not they have issued general obligation bonds, as well as special assessment bonds. This schedule I've also shown you previously, updated it for special assessment bonds that we found the answer to those questions when I originally presented it to you. The next schedule that I'll show you is the combined property tax rates, or the individual property tax rates for each of the, I guess I went a little too far here, let me back this out so it's visible, for each of the 10 community facility districts within Goodyear. These are, again, the 2006 rates that are, the rate that is allowed and the rate that was adopted for each of those districts. And the final chart that I have prepared for this evening, and I want to, I received this information from an underwriter that is active in financing this type of infrastructure through CFDs. This is the fourth page of the handout I gave you. We took 12 CFDs, actually, the underwriter selected those CFDs. I didn't even ask the purpose of it. They developed this schedule for a completely different purpose, and I plagiarized it. I told them I was plagiarizing it, but all of the data for the top 12 entries on there came from that schedule presented by the underwriter. List those 12 community facilities districts, starting with Verrado, which is in Buckeye. The first, down to Mirali, all of those are in Buckeye. Vistancia is in Peoria. Marley Park, I believe, is in Surprize, and the last four are in Goodyear. The average home price for the top 12 were from a schedule that was prepared by this underwriter for that purpose, and I used that average home price because it seemed to show a difference between the type of community. In Australia Mountain Ranch, I used $400,000, which appears to be from the feasibility study, appears to be an average of the proposed houses in there. I think some are higher and some are lower within that area. The tax rate, the target tax rate is the property tax rate for that district. And that would include the GO rate, as well as any ONM that would be included. The special assessment, I think I confused.
No, you didn't confuse me. You say average home price when you talked about that. I would assume the $400,000 is the assessed valuation average, not the home price.
You're talking about market?
This schedule actually is predicated on that being the home price and not the assessed assessor's full cash value.
Market price.
Market price.
Okay.
Okay. I take no pride in authorship in those numbers, but they're consistent along the way. The top 12 all came from that schedule, and this last one came from the feasibility The next column over then is special assessment payments. The three that you're seeing there are existing special assessment payments. The fourth one is for the proposed feasibility study that is before, or feasibility report, excuse me, that is before you, for Gulf Village Phase Two. It is only that area. There are different areas with different amounts that would show a lower total tax, as well as property tax, but it's for the one you're being asked about. So then we leave with a combined payment within the Community Facilities District, and then a calculated combined rate based on this value in the average home price, as we do in our others, and this was consistent with how the underwriter prepared their schedule. We used 82% of the average home price to be the assessor's full cash value, to be consistent with all 13 areas, which gives a total rate for that district. The total rate for that district includes any city or town property tax. It would include any school district, county, or other property tax within that area. It also includes a calculated special assessment based on that assessed valuation. So it goes beyond the property tax rolls to include this column in there, which is the special assessment payment. The actual property tax bill in Sundance, for example, where those assessments are billed separately, would be lower than this amount because it's a combined effective rate only. And so that gives you a total tax and assessment for those properties, which is for all taxes, including schools and so forth. That's an important element to, to point out in this chart. If you'll notice, some of these rates are extremely low. I'm assuming that they're either not in a school district or part of the Ruth Fisher School District with a low rate because they're just not consistent with any school rates that would be in most of, well, throughout Goodyear and most of the other communities. Any questions on just the rate schedule part? Okay. Another question, and the rest of the questions that I'm going to attempt to answer here are considerably, I think, more complex to answer, and more judgment calls in my answer. How has infrastructure financed through CFDs changed? I asked that question of our district engineer, Mr. David Gu, who is here from Will Dan this David, do you want to comment briefly? I'll ask David to comment briefly on that.
Hi, David Gu. Really, on this special assessment bond series, what we've noticed a lot on the Really, on this special assessment bond series, what we've noticed a lot on the increases of the infrastructure, the costs, is mainly due to a combination of things, starting with cost of construction going up, probably about 30%, or in an area where they're in more hilly or mountainous rocky areas. So even on the bits that they have out there, there's quite a lot of blasting and material that has to be removed through blasting. So it drives the costs up. They also have a smaller number of lots in this district. It's 492 lots. The prior district was 1103 lots. There's a big difference there on how the assessments are shared. Other than that, that's probably the biggest thing there, if you have any questions.
Thank you, David. One question I was asked also was to discuss the income tax ramifications, the difference between GO bonds and special assessment bonds as it is at a personal level. The first comment I have to make, and please include this in the record as well as everyone else, consult with your own tax advisor on this issue.
Disclosure.
Full disclosure, my expertise in the tax code is based on discussions with other people. I used to prepare them for a living, but that was 20-some years ago, and I have a professional I seek for my help, too. So with that having been said, property taxes are generally tax deductible if you meet the requirements in the IRS. The interest on a special assessment would be tax deductible. The principal on a special assessment generally gets included as part of the basis in the House and is not tax deductible. That is my understanding, but check with your tax advisor on that issue.
So the $15,000 is not tax deductible?
That's correct. The principal portion of, as that's paid, but over the life of the bonds, which should be approximately 25 years, that is correct. That $15,000 would not be deductible until the property was sold, and if it's a personal residence, that may not have a lot of impact. The next question is, how is infrastructure financed in other Arizona communities? This is, as I'm going on, these questions are getting harder. I tried to prolong this list so I wouldn't have to answer a few of them, and I was unsuccessful. I guess I've got a few answers in there and examples. City of Chandler, back in the 1980s, was very aggressive on improvement districts that were used to fund a lot of infrastructure. The property owners did pay for that infrastructure, contributed greatly to the growth of that community. City of Phoenix has, through their development fees and other development policies, has some infill policies to encourage infill so that the cost of infrastructure is not as great in the outlying areas. Those areas, their policies tend to be that you have to pay that cost of infrastructure, and then it will, as people come out towards you, that you may get reimbursed for it. Or it may be a cost of development. I think Mr. Bielli might be better equipped to answer that question also, and I will defer to him as he does his presentation. Finally, I was asked, as part of all of this, to give you my recommendation on the special assessments. I will give you that recommendation at this time, and that would be that if the council desires to approve special assessments, that you look at a combined rate of $3 per hundred as a guideline to determine what those caps would be. With that, I'd like to ask Greg Bielli to come up and present his information.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. My name is Greg Bielli. I'm president of Mountain Region for Newland Communities, which oversees Australia. Very quickly, I know that the time has been moving along, and I know there's larger conversations, but let me go through very quickly a presentation for you, because our project in 20,000 acres is not your typical project of any scale of any city. The size of Australia and what Australia means to the city of Goodyear and Goodyear to us is really looked at as a partnership. There's a lot of infrastructure that we are building and will be building in the coming years that has regional implications, not just dealing with the individual subdivisions, but I'll conclude with the one that's right in front of you tonight. This first chart will basically show you, and you have handouts and the staff has handouts, of some of the major infrastructure that we are embarking on within Australia. Major wastewater, water facilities that are going to have a regional impact, of which, obviously, we're looking at multiple different sources for the cost recovery, some of which have been referenced tonight. On the municipal side, this type of financing allows us to contribute, as we've done with regards to Cotton Lane Bridge, the Cotton Lane Access that we're in a partnership with you again to get across King Ranch, the large water and sewer wastewater issues that we need to grapple with together. Having this type of financing allows us to proceed to bring these amenities and these benefits to the community at large in a timely fashion, or otherwise, we would have to look at delaying some of these or phasing these types of projects in a different manner. And that's what the different policies that, we would be concerned if you're looking at the $3 type of cap for a combined, because at Australia, as you're aware and you've seen on your charts tonight, our GO is actually at $1.30. And it's allowed, and that's what we have. We don't have the ability on these other, to go higher other than through credit enhancement type of mechanisms, but our GO, general obligation bond, is at the $1.30. We utilize the special assessments and these other areas to make up the additional infrastructure revenue stream. Other amenities that we're bringing forth to the community that many of you are well aware of, so I didn't want to go through in a lot of your time. The different reimbursement mechanisms that we have available to us, the special assessments, the GO, the GO bonds of which we're talking about, the impact fees, which has already been referred to. We don't mingle those. We have to segregate those to individual projects. Retail sales tax that we just agreed to in the Cotton Lane program. And then the other sources aren't really defined as of yet, and that's what a job we have to come up with as time goes on, between us and the city as time goes on. The lands that you see right here are related specifically to the request that's in front of you. This is Village Five. Village Five's topography in itself has been alluded to already. It is mountainous. It is tougher terrain to build this road through this corridor, and like it being this tougher terrain, we have not put a high-density product through this project. This is beautiful land, and as far as Newland's concerned, we will be looking at a more balanced program versus what you have seen before in the Montecito program. West Star, the graphic, this is the special assessment area that we've talked about. West Stars, Phase Two and Three, are actually already in and completed. The final phase, which goes through this land that I just gave you a photo of, will be completed next year. So this is the entire loop that we're talking about on this special assessment. It is only being assessed against those parcels that directly benefit per the program. And those parcels you see right there have been allocated accordingly with a $15,200 assessment across all those lands. This slide is right out of your feasibility report. It basically focuses on the issue of, well, do the developers pay or does the community pay in total? We're asking for $7.5 million under this special assessment. You will look there that $5.6 million is actually out of our contribution to get to the total of $13 million. That's our money. That's what we're adding to this to supplement this project. We recognize that the market can only bear a certain amount of assessment on these lots. So we've agreed with the assessment criteria that's been outlined already at the $15,000. But the focus here is that there is a balance on those costs, and then we are contributing to those. It was already referenced, Calistoga and Montecito, which was before you before, that was already approved. This area actually had over 1,100 units. It was very dense, as it was referenced before. So this was the project that actually had just under 7,000. Let me show you the comparison, just so you can see. Montecito special assessment, road lengths, obviously it was a little shorter, but the total cost was 7.6. The total cost we're talking about here is 11.9. The important part of this is the projected residents within this assessment area is only 492 compared to the 1,100 that were in a more dense product and candidly could handle it, the land in Montecito Phase One on Calistoga. The density comparison clearly is 1.3 to 3.3. So that gives you an example of what the difference is between the special assessment that was there before.
I'm sorry. I'll watch you through.
Well, that concludes the presentation for you.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any questions. Yes.
What would you say the average price of the home in this particular, of the 492 residential area is going to be?
In general, we've looked at it just over the 400 level, the 400, 400,000 that was outlined before is on the conservative side, because candidly, we look at this, and this is a caveat, we're looking at probably per hundred assessed, somewhere between a $4 and a $5 rate here, and that's caveat based on what the eventual home construction is in the area, because a number of these lots, and I can go back to the graphic, Mr. Chairman, I guess I can't go back to the graphic, but basically, if you look at the graphic, the bulk of those parcels are custom lot, oh, great, came back up. The bulk of those parcels that you see up there in the lower part and some, a couple of them in the upper part are actually custom lot parcels. So we won't know the eventual, you know, we'll sell them by retail lots, but the eventual home is 1-3 value, maybe 1-4 value off the retail price.
He's just talking about base price and what else.
Correct. Any other questions?
Not right now.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, thank you for your time.
Okay, further comments from staff? Comments from the public? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution by Title Only.
Adopt EMR CFD Resolution 07-060, approving the feasibility report relating to the acquisition, construction, and financing of certain improvements benefiting the district, declaring its intention to acquire and/or construct certain improvements described in the feasibility report, forming a special assessment district, determining that special assessment lien bonds will be issued to finance the costs and expenses thereof, and declaring the improvements to be of more than local or ordinary public benefit, and that the costs of said improvements will be assessed upon the assessment district, providing that the proposed improvements will be performed, and district assessment revenue bonds issued under the provisions of Title 48, Chapter Four, and Article Six, Arizona Revised Statutes, and all amendments thereto, approving the levying of an assessment and assessment diagram for the district.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution 07-060?
So moved.
Second. Motion, Board Member Holland, second from Vice Chair.
Actually, Lord.
Lord. Lord. I haven't done that before. I'm all.
I could dye my hair, and that would help. I'm not.
Throw it out as well. Okay. Motion from Board Member Lord, second from Vice Chair Antonio. It's open for discussion. Before we do that, though, could, maybe Roar, could you layman language explain the differences in the two resolutions, 060, 061?
Scott. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first resolution, 07-060, is a resolution of intention, which is basically forms the assessment district. I'm pausing because I'm looking for the resolution.
Right in the back.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I've got it right here. The resolution 07-060 forms the district, approves the feasibility report, and adopts the boundaries for the actual assessed area, adopts the assessment diagram, which basically establishes the parcels to be assessed, it adopts an estimated cost, and it describes the project. That is also known as a resolution of intention. So it does two things, it approves the feasibility report, and it is a resolution of intention. By statute, the law incorporates the process for normal improvement districts under the city process into the CFD law. And so that process under a normal city ID includes not only a resolution of intention, but then the second step is resolution ordering the work. And quite simply, the next resolution that you refer to, 07-061, is that resolution ordering the performance of the work, which basically says, okay, now you've approved the district, you've adopted a project scope, you've adopted the estimated cost, that's first resolution. Second resolution says, go forward and perform that work. Now normally, they're separated, Mr. Chairman, because they're not normally adopted at the same evening. We normally go out and post notice and publish notice, and then people within that district would have a chance to protest and object to the boundaries, to the work, to the amount, et cetera. In this case, there is a waiver agreement where the property owner, the only property owner out there, has waived that notice and those hearings, and so consequently, that allows us to move to this next step, which says, okay, your district's formed, now go perform the work.
Okay, thank you. There's only one property owner. Only one property owner.
That's correct. Or, let me put it this way, all persons with an interest in the property have signed the waiver.
There you go. Good way to put it. Okay, then, open for discussion on the resolution concerning the attempt to form a district, among other things. Comments? Okay.
It doesn't suck. We don't suck the rate for this at the present time.
That's what we're doing. We're talking about $15,000 in assessment. $15,000 of an assessment.
I should say, I will say, I asked a lot of questions, did a lot more homework this time than, sorry to admit that, but did a lot more homework on this one, given the circumstances. But, you know, I think what each one of these CFDs and special assessments takes is a certain amount of understanding that there's a flexible marketplace, there's a flexibility in the terrain, if you will, not just physical terrain, but the nature of the project as well, a lot of unique circumstances. And so I think as we go forward, not only have we agreed to on other developments, or in theory agreed to in other developments, special assessments, but we need to look at these as each individual, unique projects. And, you know, in this case, I'm convinced, I mean, all you got to do is take a look at the picture, ride your mountain bike down there like I have many a times on the fire roads, and realize that getting a road through this area is not cheap. It's not easy. And when you talk about 500 homes versus 1,100 homes, it's that much less, or that much more expensive per household. So in this particular case, I'm convinced, but I will say, I think we need to pay special attention to these. It's been pretty easy over the last four years since I've been on this board, and it's been pretty consistent. And I think from here on out, it's going to be very inconsistent, like I've seen in the industry I've worked in for the last several years in transportation. We've seen costs go up astronomically. I mean, we've seen them in infrastructure projects within the city. In this particular case, it is transportation-related, but I think we're going to see the same in many other parts of our infrastructure as we look forward in the city. I'll rest on those comments and support this resolution, both the resolutions.
Thank you. Yes.
I feel the same in this situation. I think the argument and information that we put forth this evening relative to terrain, the construction costs have increased. We're limited to 492 lots, and the fact that they're going to charge $15,000 plus across the board for each lot. board for each lot, I think makes sound financial sense. So I will be voting for this, sir.
Yes. Board Member Lord, I'm sorry.
Couple of things, you know, we've talked about throughout the last two years that we wanted lower density. We wanted more upscale neighborhoods coming to Goodyear. Well, we've got one here. And I agree, I don't think one size fits all. And I will say that the timeframe in which this will be developed, by the way it's being assessed, will be faster than if we didn't go along with the agreements. So I'm with you. I think it's been very good for the council, because I think because of this coming before us, we've all had to take extra time in studying this and looking back into how we look at this type of financing. So in the past, by looking through this, there were some communities, which I think we've seen that maybe we could have done a better job at. At least I have when I've reviewed this. So I don't think I'll ever look at another CFD in the same light that I have since I first became a councilperson. It makes you delve into it deeper. So I also will be voting for this.
One comment on.
Yeah, one comment on the making certain that this provision in selling a lot or selling a home, and I've been great, I've talked to Greg about this, a lot of people come in, they sign their, they don't read what they're signing, and then a year later, this tax bill comes in and they don't understand it. And we need to find some way that they, that the salesperson makes a point of this at the point of sale, when they do sell their home, because this is important, that these people understand what they're buying, what they're getting into. And I think many homebuyers don't. Now, maybe with this one and with the people who buy these homes, maybe it doesn't matter, but I think it does. And I think they really need to have that verbalized as well as they read it and sign it. So, and I don't know what you can do to make a special effort to get those homebuyers to look at that more closely. And that's all I can say, but otherwise, that's all.
House member, Board Member Lord.
Thank you. I was looking at paper in which a buyer has to sign, and looking through it, there was an item under the footnotes in which I felt should be in bold letters, and it is not. And I think that would help at the closing table for someone to remember that. It says, "All of the taxes and charges described above are in addition to any taxes and fees charged imposed by the City of Goodyear or other political subdivisions, and are in addition to any assessments or fees imposed upon any homeowners association." I would like to see that in big, bold letters, because that is probably one of the most important statements on this document. And I'm not sure my next request you can do anything about, but when the properties are sold, you know, you could have five buyers, five ownerships on this one piece of property. It may be a line item on the closing costs, and so it will say a code, a CFD or utilities, whatever you want it to say on it. But does this, does this stay as a living document that passes on, on the resale market? And I don't know, and I didn't get a chance to call a closing table and find out.
What is it? Final report?
It's what they sign, it's what they sign when they do a CFD, it's initial financing cost to homeowner. They sign this, it goes in with the closing papers. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, Board Member Lord, no, it doesn't pass on. It is for that initial sale from the homeowner.
That's the weakness in the system, because, in my view, because that's where you get the call sometimes. You get the call when somebody buys, it's the second owner, the third owner, and they're saying, you know, what's this? And so somehow, I don't know how the system can be improved, it has to go to state, it has to go up, but I mean, to me, that's a great weakness in the system.
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Lord, one of the ways I think it may improve in the future is, number one, we're going to take a look at this disclosure form in general and just try to make it a little simpler, frankly. And especially once you get a subdivision, you're able to really hone in on the specific facts of that particular subdivision. So that's obviously better. Collection of the assessments on the tax rule, I think will help, because now with that second sale, somebody's going to pull a title report, and they're going to have an escrow that opens, and it's going to allocate what the tax bill and special assessments are. And so there will be a history now from that recorded record, from the assessor's rolls, from their treasurer's rolls, that will be reflected in the escrow statement. And so I'm hoping that that process, which normally is pretty good about telling you what your taxes are going to be in a general obligation way, will be supplemented and helpful in presenting at that second sale, third sale, what your assessment payments are. Now, you know, again, we're still, we're still a work in progress on that treasurer's effort that we've forwarded a couple of districts to him to put on the rules, so we're all anxiously awaiting as to how that comes out, but we'll fine tune that system also.
Thank you.
I guess I don't feel as comfortable as everybody else for this, and maybe it's still because I'm on that learning curve. I mean, this is, it feels different than the last CFD meeting we had, where there's a lot of concerns about putting a cap on things, and getting a recommendation from Larry that we cap it, or have an idea at the three dollar mark. Larry, looking at this paper you gave us this evening, now you were estimating that Australia Mountain Ranch should be a combined rate of four point seven?
That's correct, based on a four hundred thousand dollar house, which may or may not be conservative, as we heard earlier, yes. There are others, as you can see on the sheet, that high, and there are others obviously considerably lower.
That's of this particular parcel, not all the MR?
That is correct. That is only this parcel that is that rate. The last three approved would be at a lower rate. I didn't show that on that schedule.
Can I follow up on that, Larry? So a comparable, say a three in Cortina, right, not to exceed on a GO bond, right?
That's correct.
This is four point seven in Gulf Village.
That's correct, including the special assessment, yes.
The special assessment is four point seven plus one point three?
No, the combined rate that I was calculating was an estimated combined of GO, O and M, and the special assessment.
So the, okay, so Gulf Village is, the residents there will pay four point seven, equivalent.
Equivalent to four point seven, yes.
And that's because of the fifteen thousand dollar assessment?
That is correct.
Precisely. And the assessment, can a resident pay that as part of their closing cost upfront?
That can be prepaid as part of closing if they desire, that is correct.
But it can't be part of their mortgage, or can it?
With the county billing of the property tax, if that works as we all intend it to be, it would be included with the property taxes and the mortgage. No assessment has gone through that process yet, so today, we, our history has been that they're a separate bill.
No, could I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If your house is half a million, okay, and this is fifteen, could you have a mortgage of five hundred and fifteen thousand? Could you include?
Put in the total sales price of the house and mortgage it.
Yeah.
So you can wrap this into the principal cost of the home, thus reducing your combined equivalent tax rate? Because then you'd be paying the interest rate in your mortgage, not in your taxes.
And then you could write it.
And it would look as if it was retired off the tax rolls. That's what you're getting at, right?
So it would be tax deductible, right?
As an interest cost on your mortgage. Is that, I don't know if that's legal.
Well, it's creative.
That's why I'm asking, is it illegal?
How often does the, how often do people just deduct that assessment on your income tab?
No, I know that.
I'm sorry.
But if you were financing eighty percent of the house, could you add the fifteen thousand dollars to that mortgage?
I just don't want to interrupt, so there was so much dialogue. I apologize about that. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, what your lender lends to you on that house is the lender's decision. You know, clearly, if they're only eighty-five percent loan to buyer, then they're probably, and they're at that with the mortgage, and they're not going to do that. But that's a lender's decision. From a legal standpoint, that assessment can be prepaid. There are prepayment, you know, arithmetic to go to through. For example, most of these assessment bonds cannot be called for at least ten years, and consequently will need to have you prepay the principal amount plus the interest on that principal amount through ten years. Plus, there's a prepayment penalty oftentimes, maybe one percent, maybe zero, but sometimes there is. And so that amount too would be added to the prepayment of the assessment. But on day one, if I'm a lender and I don't like being behind that fifteen thousand dollar loan, I could say, pay it off. And if they can pay it off, and they're willing to lend them those proceeds to do so, it could go into the mortgage, and that'd be just fine.
So there's a, I was under the understanding, not to throw another stick in the wheel, if you will, but I was under the understanding there was no prepayment penalties on these. There is a prepayment.
Chairman, Vice Chair, typically they're, typically they cannot be called for a period of time, and consequently, what you have to do is fund the interest on that assessment amount through that period of time until you can call the bonds in that are supported by the assessment. That alone is an interest component added to the principal. Then sometimes, there is a prepayment penalty, usually around one percent, that occurs on that date for the outstanding principal amount. Now remember, at that date, you will have paid nine or so installments of principal, so it'll be less, but, you know, one percent penalty is sometimes there.
And that's on a regular mortgage sometimes, that's on a lot of different financing. There's a prepaid clause in there of interest, so that's common.
I tell you, Mike, you back to the, I'm not hung up on the cost, I'm hung up on the disclosure. I'm, you know, if I drive down a road and there's no houses on it, and I get to my house at the end of this fifteen mile road, and you tell me I just paid for that road, makes common sense. Paid for that road to get me to that house. I mean, it wasn't there before, it makes, you know, it makes sense to me. But if you don't explain to me how I'm paying for that road, or how I'm paying for that sewer line in a way that is understandable for the homebuyer, which gets more and more complex as we go on.
That's the case in internal.
I mean, it's not going to stop me from approving this tonight, but I do think there's a longer-term discussion about this, and whether that's influence at the legislative level, whether that's influence at the local level, there is a longer-term discussion here about the disclosure of it that I'm willing to help, help on. I'm quite willing to, you know.
Well, there's two other medium here for disclosure. One is scheduled by the title report, for the life of the property. And I think people do read that. And then the seller's property disclosure statement by law has to include that when the seller sells the property, if there's an assessment against it. The seller doesn't always know that there's an assessment against it, that's one of the issues, I think. Well.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, just to conclude on the interest, I just asked Grant Hamel of Stone and Youngburg, who sells a lot of these bonds. Remember the call date on the bonds, where I say is ten years, that varies, but historically it's been ten, or at least in recent history. That doesn't have to be the case. I mean, we could say these bonds are callable every six months with no penalty. That'll reflect itself in rate. And I asked Grant how much in rate, and, you know, I guess that would vary day to day, but twenty-five to fifty basis points, so a quarter to a half a percent on the interest rate. So now, if your bonds are going out at six and a half, they're going to be seven. Or five and a half, they're going to be six, that sort of thing. But that allows someone to step in every six months. But I think what you point out is, this probably has enough of a variable component at a number of levels that another discussion at another day would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, because if you move here from, you know, middle America or somewhere else where you've just had your primary tax rate all your lives, and you get here and you move into a home, and you've got three or four different places you're paying taxes, and you're not used to doing that, it's, it is a bit surprising. For those of us that maybe have bought two or three homes in the valley, not as surprising. But those of us that are importing in, which we know, there's a lot of imports coming, so. Anyway.
The Australia Mountain Ranch has a one, a dollar thirty. Is that for everyone in Australia Mountain Ranch? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. No?
Well, everybody in the Australia Mountain Ranch CFD. But that doesn't include everybody in the Australia Mountain Ranch project.
Does it include people around the lake, or?
Part of the, like, our chairman, if I may.
Like all things, I'll bet that's not an easy answer, there is probably, it's probably some people around the lake and some, do you know your boundaries?
The CFD area pretty much includes all lands north of Pecos. Could you come to the microphone, please?
Al Bradley, Newland Communities. The CFD area includes pretty much all the lands north of Pecos alignment, except for several parcels, but generally north of Pecos.
And so virtually all of Australia Mountain Ranch?
Yes.
So everybody's paying a buck thirty, and those in Gulf Village will pay?